We are going to call this meeting to order. And let's please take a moment to recognize that we are here on the traditional territory of the Lilawat Nation. And we're thankful for their partnership, their stewardship, and their continued advocacy for these lands and the world that we live in. I'm grateful for many of the partnerships there and friendships that we've developed over these years. So with that, could I ask that someone please move approval of the agenda? Moved by Director Stone or seconded by Director Birch Jones?
And could I just confirm that for the presentation by Lilo and Agriculture and Food, we have a little extra time this morning?
Right. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the previous agenda that was issued on Friday had two delegations presenting us, presenting to us today. The presentation from the Ministry of Forests had to cancel, so that puts a little bit of extra time into our agenda. So I'll invite you to the table. Sorry. Monica. Thank you very much. And I'll turn the floor over to you. Great. I think we're gonna drive for you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good morning, Chairboard and Directors, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Sarah Petznik, and I'm the Executive Director of the Lilawat Agriculture and Food Society, or as we call it, LAFS. Slide, please. LAFS was founded in 2016 based on the SLRD Area B District of Lilawat and Stadium Agricultural Plan. Since then, we've been putting that plan into action, turning community vision into real projects that strengthen farms, families, and our local economy. What's remarkable is how much has been achieved with a small but stable foundation, for years, one staff person, and $25,000 in annual core funding. Through partnerships, volunteers, and consistent leadership, we've built a network now recognized across the province as a model for rural food systems. Today, I want to share how that foundation, especially our payment in lieu of taxes or PILT funding, has made all of this possible, and how each dollar of support continues to multiply into measurable benefit for farmers, families, and the land itself. Slide, please. The organization and board track this work through a living document we call the report card. It helps us measure how we've implemented top priorities from the agricultural plan. For example, the Lilawat Ground Storefront fulfills Action 1.1A, creating partnerships between farmers and retailers. Our producer workshops funded through provincial programs deliver the capacity building envisioned in Action 1.3D. LAFS is the hands-on work that brings the agricultural plan to life across the region. Slide, please. So why support food? Because food connects everything, the economy, community, and environment. Slide. Economically, agriculture is one of the most powerful tools for rural development. Local farms create jobs, diversify incomes, and keep wealth circulating within our communities. Slide. Socially, food brings people together in ways few other things can. Our farmer's market, community meals, and the nutritional coupon program create welcoming, inclusive spaces where people connect, share experiences, and build understanding, and families access healthy food with dignity. When we invest in local food, we're also investing in health, belonging, and community pride, strengthening the social fabric that makes us resilient. Slide. Environmentally, building a local food system is climate action. By shortening the distance from field to plate, we reduce emissions, protect farmland, and support farmers who use regenerative practices. Each local dollar spent on food supports stewardship of land and water, healthier soils, and stronger ecosystems, foundations for a sustainable future. Across Canada and globally, local food systems are being recognized as critical to both climate adaptation and community security, and LAFS is leading that work right here in Lilawat. Slide. So why support LAFS? Because we turn the vision and goals of the agricultural plan into an operational framework that creates measurable results and community impact. Slide. Since 2018, LAFS has received about $243,000 in PILT support. With that, we have leveraged $880,000 in additional funding, a 361% return on investment. Slide. You can see in this slide, we had some big infrastructure projects in 2021 and 2022. A slide. Slide. For every $1 of core support, we have generated $4.61 in community benefit. That leverage represents the return on investment we are able to deliver when supported with a reliable annual budget to access competitive funding programs, develop infrastructure, and launch initiatives that otherwise wouldn't be possible. Slide. LAFS also manages the Lilawat Farmer's Market. Slide. According to the 2023 B.C. Farmer's Market Economic Impact Study, our market contributes over $371,000 annually to the local economy, including $247,000 in direct sales. We see more than 10,000 visits each year, and 17% of visitors are tourists, showing how local food supports both agriculture and tourism. And shoppers spend an additional $249,000 at nearby businesses, which shows how the market boosts the entire downtown economy. These results directly align with the agricultural plan's long-term goal of enhancing farm profitability through new marketing opportunities, and we're proud to see that progress validated through independent data. Slide. LAFS also administers the B.C. Farmer's Market Nutritional Coupon Program, one of the most successful food security initiatives in the province. Slide, please. In 2018, we received funding for 12 families. Now, in 2025, we are able to support over 58 households, representing more than $25,000 in local food purchases each season. That means healthy meals for families in need and steady income for dozens of local farmers, a direct measurable link between community well-being and farm viability. Slide, please. Last year, we launched the Lilawat Ground Storefront at the Hub, a year-round social enterprise that connects farmers, producers, and customers. Each purchase keeps money circulating locally, supports employment and skills training, and builds collaboration with other organizations. Time and again, studies show that local food systems generate two to three times more local economic activity per dollar than conventional supply chains. By intentionally growing that local link in Area B, we're choosing economic resilience. Every small farm, value-added product, and local marketplace forms part of a chain of community-rooted economic growth that stays in our region. Slide. In summary, LAFS is a small organization achieving big results. The society is proof that with small, stable funding, we can achieve outsized impact, coordinating markets, launching social enterprises, supporting farmers, and building regional connections. We're implementing the agricultural plan, leveraging every dollar into long-term benefit, and building a food system that strengthens our economy, our environment, and our community. Slide. Supporting LAFS means investing in a perfect model for rural development, one that builds prosperity, resilience, and connection for generations to come. Slide. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Hi. Thank you. Through the chair. Just wondering if you can speak a little bit to how the Lilawat Grown Storefront is staffed or managed?
Oh, it's staffed in terms of how we pay staff or?
You have like a full-time staff member? What are the hours?
Yes.
We're curious to open one in Squamish. Or on the path to opening one, I should say.
Okay. Yeah. So the store's been going for a year, and it did fairly well. Its first year, it actually made a bit of money, which is impressive for the first year. And then this year, we were able to get some redebt funding, so we put some of that towards wages. It was a joint project with the Ukumuk Farm. And so there was equipment and processing for their facilities, and then some wages for our storefront. And then we also got a wage subsidy through the B.C. Wage Subsidy Program. And then the store is also making a bit of money, so that.
And is it like, what are the hours that it's open?
The hours are the hub hours, and so that's actually.
So Monday, Tuesday through Saturday, about 10 to 5. They're posted and they're regular. I think that's about the schedule. And because the farmer's market falls on Friday morning, a lot of folks are working or otherwise busy, and so having a store open on Saturday means people can come and get their local food, bread, vegetables on a Saturday, which has really boosted sales. And yeah.
And we do share with the hub. So the hub has our silhouette and other programs going on, and so we also share a bit with the employees there, so that works well.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thanks. Director Pettenfield, go ahead.
So and just curious about the same topic. I'm sort of in from the picture, making some assumptions, but it kind of looks like artisan, maybe tourist-focused or like and not the where folks who are needing better meals would go. Is that like, is there a, is that something, a mistaken assumption, or is that like a target market or like?
No, that's right. So yeah, the storefront is more like the farmer's market in a store. And obviously, there's different regulations for a store, so it can't be exactly the farmer's market in the storefront. And we are talking about having some kind of sliding scale so that there's more access. But we have a few things to work out just in terms of financials and getting started before we may be able to do that and have that flexibility. But that is a goal and something the board has been discussing. And there are other places in Lilawat for access and then for more access, sorry, for low-income families. And we also run the coupon program through the farmer's market, so that's where we support families who can't necessarily, yeah, local food can be expensive and out of reach for a lot of people, so that's how we support those families in the community.
Thank you for the presentation, and I really appreciate the inclusion of the report card. I think it's going to show like where the victories are and where there's still work to do. So and we don't often seek at that level of detail, so thank you for that. My question is around the other funding sources that make up a big piece. We heard some in your reply to Director Stone, I'm sorry, I'm dying apparently. But do you have some other examples of just what those funding sources have been?
Yes, a big one. Yeah, a big one that you said in 2021, 22 was the SERF project. So that was the Community Economic Recovery Infrastructure Program, and that was for a cold storage facility, and we ended up partnering with Sprig Creek Ranch for a spotter facility in the community, which is great. That's actually, yes, getting going. Staff is always one of the hardest things in Lilawat. Yeah, getting people trained, so, but it's getting going this year, which is awesome to see. I also apply for gaming funding as well every year, so we've been successful in that over the years. The Farmer's Market Nutritional Coupon Program, so we applied for that, and then we partnered with the Hub, and we were able to get funding through United Way, through the Hub to support more families for the coupon program. I've also applied to United Way for other projects. We got infrastructure for, again, in partnership with Ukumuk this year for farm infrastructure. And I've also, there was one just came to mind and now it's gone, but yes, we, yeah, applied to lots. Anything that comes up that's related to food and agriculture, essentially, I applied for the grant, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That's useful context. I think in this role, we have, you know, there's that core funding, PILT funds, like direct funding, and there's that role of advocacy and just trying to understand what programs have been beneficial to an initiative like this is helpful context, so thank you.
I have Director DeMare on the screen.
Thank you for the presentation and all the work that LAFS has done over the years. I've just got one question, and I know Vivian has mentioned it before at our meetings. It's trying to get the local producers into the local grocery stores and the challenges associated. Could you just speak to that just a little bit, please?
Yeah, I think that one of the ways, I'm hopeful that the storefront is one of the ways that we can, that we can assist farmers in doing that. I think the biggest challenge is that often farmers just aren't big enough, and they don't have enough to sell to a local grocery store. And so, and then the cost of getting all of the certifications that you need to do that is not worth it. And so there's a gap in the market where farmers are small and they're doing well, but once they hit that point, there's not really, it doesn't make sense to get those certifications and change over. And so I'm hopeful that with more facilities and more capacity in the community, farmers will make more money. And we, of course, will also support, we've run workshops like the GAP workshop in the past to help farmers get those certifications, but they inevitably are just a challenge and they do cost more. And so the idea would be that if farmers are able to scale up from maybe only going to the farmer's market once a week to selling all week at the storefront, then they're able to ramp up production each year, and hopefully that starts to bridge the gap, and they're then able to access bigger markets. So I'm hopeful that's one way we could potentially help.
Thank you.
We had discussions with Minister Lana Popham about this very issue and have asked about their commitment to Buy B.C. and other programs like that. And so it would be interesting, certainly happy if the board would like for us to communicate with her again, this sort of ongoing need for, you know, if certification cost is the barrier to being able to access those stores, you know, what? Absolutely, honey.
Yeah, and it's a lot of, it's also a lot of just kind of hoops to jump through. Like it's just on farm, like a lot of things on farm that are just such a challenge and a headache that most farmers just kind of, you know, throw their hands up. It's just, it sort of feels like it's, yeah, not necessary, some of it. And that's not all the certifications, but certainly the gap has proved to be a challenge.
Right, right. Okay. I think, you know, I think it would be certainly interesting to her for her to come up, and she's come up into the Sea to Sky region to see, and she was on a different file at that time, but she's certainly keen to see the rest of our region. And so it would be great to have her come up and do a tour with you and understand, you know, the exciting things and opportunities within our region that people just don't understand, they don't know about, right? So I'm often telling people that we're the Okanagan of the West, West. So with, you know, small vineyards and beautiful opportunities up there, so.
Thank you. You can see why I continue to support Lilawat Agriculture and Food Society with a relatively small amount of payment in lieu of taxes money year to year. It's extremely good value for our tax dollars. And Sarah is brilliant executive director and so good at overseeing this and writing grants and seeing opportunities. But the synergy that we have going with the Hub and some of the social programs is really, got a beautiful multiplier effect in the community, so I'm obviously very proud of what's happening here. And a very, a very talented and capable board too, with some really great expertise to help guide Sarah. But when you see those reports on an annual basis, almost most of the credit goes to Sarah here. So I'm really happy that you could listen to this presentation today.
Director Stone, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I think this question is actually to my colleague, Director Birch Jones. I know that you put in money annually through PILT. Is there a partnership agreement that would provide some like multi-year stability or a service area that would allow so that we don't have to do it on an annual? Like, we've talked about this from the southern portion as well, but I am just curious if that's a really just an annual allocation or if it's a multi-year partner?
A few years ago, we spent quite some time, thank you, Ms. Duer, establishing a bylaw with the District of Lilawat for a potential shared tax service as a long-term way to have stable funding. And we did pass the bylaw, was it before COVID? It's been sitting for a few years, ready to go. It's sort of described as economic development so that it gives flexibility to the district and Area B to fund. My goal was Lilawat Agriculture and Food Society, but there's a lot of potential for other organizations, you know, where we share, where we share goals between the two of us. We haven't implemented that yet. The tax base in Lilawat is frankly tiny, and Area B with the payment in lieu of taxes has been able to afford to carry this quite happily. And so we have a good partnership and we have that option for the future. And what we would like to do in that case is have the District of Lilawat better informed about the value of this, and so we just recently added Counselor Kevin Aiken to the Agricultural Advisory Committee, and he's been participating with the Lilawat Agriculture and Food Society. There's so much overlap between those two groups. And he's going to be a great rep for the district to be a liaison, and Sarah's going to do another presentation for the district in the future too. So, yes, we're working towards that. We have essentially established what we need. And yes.
And are we able through just the payment in lieu of taxes to do a multi-year partnering agreement, or does that have to be an annual allocation?
I am not sure. That's fair.
Well, ask finance staff when they have a question.
Back to the budget discussion.
It's something middle ground.
I think it would be a year to year, but you know, just like a lot of our other service areas, like search and rescue and the library, we, radio, TV in the Area B in Lilawat, they can be confident that that's going to be repeated on an annual basis, although of course, we have to approve the budget year to year, and so that's an option.
Yep.
We have one farmer online representing Area D, Paula is here from.
Yeah. If I can speak to it quickly, I think it's really impressive work, and I really like seeing the economic benefit laid out and the spin-off. Also, what stuck out to me is just the tie into how it also impacts tourism and filters through the rest of the economy. Jen mentioned that there is stuff going on in Squamish, and I just, from a Squamish Valley grower perspective, there could, I think this is very inspiring, and there needs to be a little bit more work and development on how to actually connect the Squamish Valley community to what's going on. But I think that it's, yeah, it's really, really positive to see, and yeah, inspires me for things and opportunities that we can look into up here. And there might be more, but it might just, that I'm unaware of. But speaking, we have an amazing farming, farmer nutrient dense. These guys are regenerative farmers up in the Squamish Valley, and they have been working on developing and clearing the land, and they're just, yeah, that would be the key people to communicate with in our area. They're quite impressive. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Yeah. Moved by Director Stone or seconded by Director Risha.
I do want to speak to it briefly. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the presentation and all the work. I do want to just highlight also at the Union of B.C. Municipalities Conference this past September, Ms. Duer, along with a planner from the District of Squamish and Crystal Tenbrink, who's the Executive Director of Squamish Climate Action Network, who has learned so much from you folks forging the path on this, did do a presentation to the Union of B.C. Municipalities. That was a phenomenal presentation that spoke to the 10-year journey of policy work that has led up to enabling LAFS and Squamish Can to be these real economic, social drivers in our communities that support local food. And the number of questions that I got from elected officials from across the province back doors being like, how did you do this? And Ms. Duer fielded a lot of really great questions of, how do you do this in a smaller community? And we pointed to LAFS, and she pointed to LAFS, and just the amazing work that's going on. And the ability that you folks have on what I would call very much a shoestring budget to not only do the work on the ground, but also do the heavy lift of showing the spin-off impacts that Paula was just speaking to, the economic impacts is so valuable because that gives folks like us the opportunity to go back, do those presentations, meet to the minister, and say, this is why you need to continue to invest in this work, and this is why it's so important. So just want to thank you for the time, the continued effort, and 100% agree on the importance of building up the supply chain and the infrastructure from the storefront in order to be able to really support our farmers in the longer term, to not just be able to get into the existing grocery stores that we know that system is challenging for so many reasons, let alone just the privatization of those stores. So it's not just the certification, it's everything about them, whereas if we can actually build up those local supply chains and those storefronts, I do think that is the way forward. So thanks for the continued work.
Well said.
Also, that presentation at UBCM, just so folks know, had one of the highest ratings. I do sit on convention committee for UBCM, so I get to go through all the feedback, and every single presentation and session gets rated by those who do the survey after, and that session got like a 4.9 out of 5. It was phenomenal.
Yeah, it was really good. Okay, well, thank you very much for your time today and for, as has already been said, for all of the work you do. And we certainly, we know a lot about your organization because Vivian is your best advocate.
I'm always speaking of.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
Sure.
I'll give you a five-minute recess just to say goodbye.
Thank you. Have a little momento to keep coming back to Lilawat. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, that was a great regional moment. Thank you. And I've lost my pen. So we will move now. We will move now. We do not have a closed agenda, so we'll skip right along to our remuneration bylaw. And we will turn it over to Monica. Right?
See you over.
Sorry, I skipped that.
Even shameful.
I'm with Director Environmental Services and I can see you. I just have one note for the Christmas party to remind you all to RSVP, RSVP to Natalie. It's December 17.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That's it, yes.
Thank you. Everyone clear? Hey.
Move a seat.
Great. Seconded by Director Hopple. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll go to Monica.
Thank you, Chair.
Good morning.
I'm Monica Hulitsky, HR Manager for the SLRD. So this is a report related to the Remuneration SLRD Board of Directors Remuneration. Following an abbreviated review of Directors' Remuneration that staff undertook at the end of 2023, which is ultimately referred to the Policy Development and Review Committee, the board passed a resolution for staff to pursue a broader review of Directors' Remuneration prior to the 2026 general local elections. And this report is basically bringing forward total remuneration comparative data from other regional districts, analysis of remuneration and expense categories outlined in the current Directors' Remuneration Bylaw, number 1501 2016, and also bringing forward recommendations for consideration. So to support this work, staff have engaged Harbor West Consulting to conduct an initial review of remuneration, and they're here today to provide information on their review, including best practices, preliminary research findings, and recommendations. And in conjunction with their recommendations, staff are looking to engage the board on the considerations as they relate to board remuneration and for direction on the undertaking of an expanded independent review of board remuneration, or to forego an expanded review and proceed with updating the Directors' Remuneration Bylaw number 1501 2016, and bringing back at a future board meeting that bylaw for adoption prior to the next elections. So we have Sheila, Levangi, and Catherine Ord from Harbor West Consulting joining us electronically. Thank you to both of you for being here this morning, and over to you.
Nice, nice. Hello, everyone, and happy, was it, happy Thursday or was it Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you. Happy Thursday. So we're delighted to connect with you. Today, me and my colleague Catherine here are going to walk you through some of the work that we've done as identified by Monica, and be happy to answer any questions. So without further ado, just do a little bit of an introduction. So next slide. So as mentioned, we're Harbor West Consulting. We are an HR consulting firm. We are located on the, seated in ancestral territories of the Squamish, Musqueam, and Tsleil-Waututh Nations. Our office is also located, which is also known as North Vancouver. We, as a company, we do work with a lot of what we call value-based organizations, municipalities, post-secondary, not-for-profit sector. We do executive search and HR consulting, and in that capacity, we've done a lot of work with municipalities around compensation, and so we're delighted to be able to come and speak to you about the work that we've done to date. And so we're delighted to be able to uh, come and speak to you about the work that we've done to date that is relevant uh, to your regional district. So I'm going to go and turn it over to my wonderful colleague Catherine to uh, walk you through, through some of our preliminary findings uh, and our recommendations moving forward.
Yeah, thanks Sheila. Uh, so pleased to be here, everyone. Um, a warm welcome uh, from us here. Um, so yeah, when we look at compensation or remuneration, we, we, especially with um, working with you at Squamish Lilouette is, we have a couple of goals and one of our goals is to, we've looked at reviewing your remuneration and to, our objective here is to balance, to make sure that there's fair and equitable pay in a fiscally responsible sort of context. And it's really important that you feel that you're fairly paid. And when we talk about fairness, what we do is we look at similar organizations, similar roles and responsibilities. We gather different data and with that data, we try to paint a picture uh, of what fair and equitable data might look like. And if you could skip two slides, please. So for today, we, we know that uh, over the last couple of years and perhaps longer than that, there's been some discussion uh, amongst yourselves about your remuneration uh, and what that might look like um, in, you know, to be, to be fair and equitable. And we've um, started to work uh, with staff um, to see if we can help move that conversation along in a meaningful and reasonable way. So for today, um, we thought we would present back to you our scan um, of that initial, uh, our initial scan of how you're remunerated as directors, to talk about what some of that best practice might be when we look at remuneration and analyze remuneration, to determine who might be your market comparators, and we'll talk a little bit about that, and then determine what the potential next steps are for you. So without further ado, if we move on to the next slide, please. So our initial scan, we know that um, at Squamish Lilouette, you have the following components that form your remuneration. You have your stipends, which are different depending if you're an electoral area director or if you're a municipal director. Um, as part of your bylaws, there are meeting allowances for alternate directors. And you have expense allocations for travel, transport, food per DM, accommodation, office, and you have group health benefits. If I just pause there, um, there is nothing particularly unusual about those components. Most regional districts provide in their bylaws, those particular components to remunerate their, their um, board of directors. What I will say is that our initial scan, we would say, um, and we'll come a little bit more to some data that we've been able to um, to see is that those base stipends, you are paid. Um, those are pa- fairly, fairly well, that they're fairly strong compared to compare, some comparator organizations. We'll have a discussion around those meeting allowances and the differences that regional di- districts um, approach this. Um, and again, you've got expenses, nothing particularly out of the ordinary there, but you know from Monica's report, they are a little bit under. So um, there are many different components that we um, we consider when we're, when, when we do a remuneration analysis for local governments. What we also look at is not just what you're, what you're paid, but how that process works. So we know that Squamish Lilouette, in your bylaws, your remuneration is directed by annual CPI increases. And we know that that you've received increases since 2022 aligned to CPI typically around two or three percent. There was a bit of a 2023, um, there was a larger CPI was going through that sort of crazy post-COVID um, situation. And so there was a bit of an uh, a greater increase there. I would say, we would say, I don't know of a uh, regional district that does not provide increases based on CPI. Um, so that is absolutely standard. Where you do differ compared to the majority of regional districts is that you don't have in your bylaws a direction to do a remuneration review by an independent body, whether that be a task force or an external consultant, every term. And it is best practice to have that every-term review of your remuneration. That, this helps you sort of um, uh, accommodate once every so often events such as changing that legislation that happened at the end uh, at 2019. It helps you pr- um, nurture, for want of a better word, a sustainable remuneration policy. So you're not passing on a lagging in remuneration to your next, um, to the next government. So there's a public policy reason why we would always recommend that there is a once-a-term um, review. When we did your scan of your um, remuneration and those components, from our knowledge, like I said, there was a bit of a hint there. Though that base salary you're paid pretty well compared to some other organize, some other local governments. Um, and in 2024, I know that most of you will know this from your previous discussions. Squamish Lilouette participated in a salary survey that was commissioned by another regional district. But as a participant in that survey, you were able to receive those results and we've had a look at those. And that confirms what, you know, what our sort of initial analysis says is it, is though base stipends are fairly, fairly strong against um, your uh, comparator, what, uh, but against those comparator organizations. And if we, we go to the next slide, I'll sort of show you that uh, initial analysis. So your electoral area directors, I've put the 2024 stip- um, uh, stipends in here. They have increased uh, since then, but I've tried to compare like to like. And we can see here that uh, electoral area directors are play, uh, are paid over 15% more compared to other local governments. And municipal directors are paid more. However, however, and this is a big however, what's really important when you look at remuneration is a total compensation lens. So what is uh, what differentiates Squamish Lilouette from some of those comparator organizations is that your meeting allowance is part of that stipend. What is also, although there was sort of um, an initial analysis of those part, those, those different allowances, it wasn't put together in a total analysis. And I think, and we think it's really important to consider that. So that, yep, Sheila, yep.
Yes, just to be clear, just to, what's interesting to note is that in other, some other regional districts, in addition to that stipend, they get a meeting allowance. For you guys, that's, that meeting allowance is built into your meeting stipend. So this picture that you're seeing here doesn't actually capture the full total remuneration because of the, uh, for some of those other uh, regional districts, in addition to that stipend, they're also receiving a regular meeting allowance.
Yeah.
What do you, Catherine?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and Monica's done some work there to have a look and saying, okay, so how much is that meeting? How much is that meeting time incorporated into your total stipend? And I think um, the, the initial uh, analysis that we've seen is that you, you uh, attend a typical amount of meeting allowances, but this is the other, it, it, I find it interesting. This is the other, other interesting thing about remuneration analysis is that many regional districts deal with this very differently. And there are big variances that we take care to analyze when we, when we look into this.
Catherine, can I interrupt you for one second?
Of course.
Is it okay if we ask questions as we go?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
I just wanted to add, add something that I'm not seeing is that for at least area B Electoral Area Director. Um, if I attend a Thompson Regional Health Board meeting, there's a small stipend that comes back to me and they would cover any travel expenses. I usually do them on Zoom, depending. I like to go in person, but they, they would cut, they would cover travel expenses.
Absolutely. Yeah. And thank you for ra- thank you for raising that because uh, it's not as straightforward as just looking at the, the stipend. Different, you receive different allowances according to different bylaws and, and what have you. And that's a really good example of why it's important to like dive into the detail to really um, fully understand uh, what the total remuneration is for a director. Yeah, good point.
And that would be in the remuneration bylaw for the Thompson Nicola Regional District.
Yeah, and we, we pick it all up.
Another one?
Yeah.
So there are some, there are some additional.
Yeah, so it's hard to say what you get and what someone else gets is the same or fair enough.
Yeah. And it, and it's interesting. So when we've done, you know, when, when we look at this work, we know that, so for example, take that meeting allowance and take the uh, travel time that you may get from your own local government or that you may get, for example, from Thompson River, if you're um, sitting on a committee over there, is that um, that those allowances may increase your basic stipend by up to 20 to 30%. You know, it's significant, which is why it's, you know, that's, that's sort of, it's, it's significant.
So I suppose in conclusion, in terms of.
Trying to understand. Yeah. Ar- Armin, is this a clarity question on this?
It is on, on this. Those external uh, appointments that being an elected official in this capacity sort of enable you to potentially take on that additional work. Uh, is that really a consideration in the remuneration for the role of sitting here? Because those other things have compensation associated with their, the workload.
Yeah.
There. So like, how, how big of a factor is that, knowing that there are these other things that could be happening?
And again, I think, I think that's an excellent point. And in our analysis, we would, we sort of categorize things as things to include, things not to include, but is an additional extra that is beyond the scope of your responsibility and role that is uh, related to Squamish Lilouette. So that would be an additional um, element.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So to your point, as it relates to the decisions that you need to make at Squamish Lilouette vis a vis the remuneration provided to directors, that is maybe supplementary information that is a nice to know because it can certainly inform. But in terms of deciding how you guys want to set your compensation philosophy for the directors, for the work that you guys are commissioned to do, uh, that would be, you know, supplementary, but not uh, core data.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in conclude, I mean, as we kind of walk through this, as just a reminder in terms of the decision that you guys will need to make, is the question is, you know, do you have enough data right now to be able to make decisions to update your compensation? Or would you be seeking further research to be able to inform a more comprehensive understanding of the market to make an informed decision vis a vis yours, of your compensation philosophy? And what we're flagging is that the current data that is available to you, while interesting, isn't nuanced enough to be able to capture some of the elements that makes your compensation uh, unique and or similar to some of your peers here. And certainly how that meeting allowance is either built in or uh, in addition to your stipend is I think a key point that has been missed in some of the previous work that has been done by previous consultants.
Uh, I think Sal has his hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Sal.
Yeah, thank you. I think there were uh, some key things that I saw and one of them, especially for SLRD Area A Director, is travel time. You know, it's uh, basically three and a half, four-hour drive in the wintertime for the Area A Director to Pemberton for meetings. And that, that's, that's one way. So, you know, there's many other things to look at and as, as, as been discussed, I think it's actually pretty important to have that uh, you know, as an additional is the extra, the extra work that we're doing. Like currently I'm on NDIT Board, Thompson Nicola Regional Hospital District, et cetera, et cetera. Where I think for transparency that we need to put those in there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Absolutely. And it, it kind of comes back to the whole discussion about how many meetings is reasonable within the confines of the current stipend. You know, if you're going to a meeting every week and it's an eight-hour travel day to get to that meeting, that's significantly different than someone who lives here in Pemberton and can come to the meeting every week in 10 minutes. Um, I just saw a question from Director Stoner. So just to set the stage, we currently don't cover travel time for directors. We cover travel time for alternates. So, so for Tommy coming up from Furry Creek is different than for Paula coming up from Paradise Valley.
Yeah.
Although they're both doing the same job. Now, arguably, it's different. And I, and I, sorry, I should take names out of this because this is not about the current directors. It is about the circumstances for the directors that will be elected next year.
Totally.
Um, and then I'll go to Director De Jong, uh, with her hand up.
Oh, I thought you were, um, is my turn? I thought I heard Jenna. Yeah, okay. Um, I just would like to see a little bit more research on this in the sense of some of our areas also have different cost of living. Squamish, Sea to Sky has a higher cost of living. And I think there was just a recent study out about a living wage being about $28 per hour. So while it's really interesting to see how this compares to other areas, um, and other districts, it's also very, like, there's nuances within each region, whether it's that uh, travel distance or cost of living in different areas. Um, yeah. So I just think there could be a little bit more information and I would love to see the wages at a point where they're actually like, uh, high enough to attract people who are able to do the position or interested in running for election, um, if they have to give up part-time jobs or other careers to do this and, and balancing that out.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I think you're mentioning is a little bit around how do you, as a regional district, define your compensation philosophy? What are the values that inform how you set your remuneration? And I think that's a really important uh, discussion. That will be something that you guys can certainly noodle on. But certainly, should you wish to engage, you know, us or an external consultant to do further research, the objective would be to, to provide that additional data to help you make that informed decision about how you do it. I will flag certainly for organizations, looking at that cost of living in uh, you know, it, by region is, is can be complicated to inform, you know, to, to, as part of your compensation philosophy. But that being said, I think there's an, uh, an opportunity to have an interesting conversation around that, uh, recognizing some of the complexities that it has. So.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, and Director De Jong almost got at it, but is for this cohort or this space, is attraction retention data available or that's what we'd have to sort of define our philosophy, but there really wouldn't be the data available to inform, you know, objectively what we could do with that.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's a really interesting discussion point is that, you know, obviously one of our objectives would be to, you know, how, your compensation is, how do you lower that barrier for people to participate in um, community and local government? And uh, there's a, you know, there's, there's, there's other things that you could do that you, that, that might be available to you to attract people to join uh, or to um, put themselves up for election. Um, and there's certainly things that you can do to help people uh, stay i- in that position. Yeah.
We're often asked if this is a full-time job or a part-time job. And my personal response after 11 years in a local, local government is, it's as much as you choose to put into it. You can open the package on the morning of and show up for the bare minimum meetings or you can put in a ton of time. And those are choices to be made by each individual director. And obviously you're going to get more value and, and more enjoyment out of the job. Um, but those are all subjective decisions to, um, that we can't really factor in, in this space. But I think that's the reason we're having this discussion.
Yeah. Um, for sure.
If there's more slides, I can hold my question to the end, but I do have something that kind of in here.
There are more slides, yes.
Yeah, maybe I'll just, if I can first.
Uh, let's, let's carry on back.
Yes. No, it was a good pause to have a discussion uh, there and I, and I, and it sounds, yeah. Um, so in terms of um, what best practices, when. Um, so in terms of um what best practice is when it comes to reviewing your remuneration? So we can help answer all these questions uh which are all legitimate and expected questions when we talk about remuneration in local government is um, you know, oh, sorry, next slide. Thank you. Is, you know, when you refer to the Union of B C Municipalities Remuneration uh Best Practice Guide, they recommend um an independent review every term. And from what's common best practice, that happens in the majority of other regional districts. We also uh recommend, as does the U B C M, um is to establish a reasonable comparator organization. And this is again, maybe pause for discussion. And one of the things that we would seek your direction on um should you wish to do an expanded uh uh um research uh and analysis is, who is your, who are your comparator organizations? Typically, we would recommend, as does the U B C M, that you select comparator organizations based on geography, size and scope. And how do we measure those? We typically measure those in the local government space with the, the size of your service budget, your population, geography. Um. And what we find is that there, again, there are many variables and we would recommend a core list, which uh is in your report, your pre-reading report. And uh we may also recommend that you add other organizations as supplemental, which may also tell an interesting story. Um, and we also recommend uh as per this discussion that uh we, and you consider all components of that remuneration, like you say, travel time is, you know, that it's a significant part of your role and responsibility um that should arguably be rewarded. Um. And so those are the three areas of be- best practice that, that we would recommend to inform um further analysis. Any questions on sort of the, the sort of methodology or the sort of the, the idea behind um these best practice? No? Okay. All right. Um, so as per your pre-reading, um we, oh, sorry, next slide. I kept, I keep pressing my button and it's not me. I'm used to driving. We recommend um that, you know, in twenty twenty four, you'll remember that Squamish Littlewet actually carried out a staff compensation review, and we would recommend that we, to use that to be defensible. Why would you choose different organizations? Question, you, there may be reasons for you to, to choose different organizations, but we, we suggest that's a good starting point. And if you look at your table, the, they're reasonable comparators based on that population, based on the budget size. Um, and so with those nine organizations, that's what we would recommend. We would also, we often do this when we work with um local government and, and other, uh, and other organizations is to include some supplemental data. Everything tells a story and there's are sometimes outliers, there's sometimes consistencies, there's sometimes inconsistencies. Everything tells a story. And we suggest that if you include Fraser Valley, Thompson and Central Oganargan based on geography and elements of their um characteristics, you might want to include them as supplemental. They may be, they may tell an interesting story. Um, and then next slide, if there's no questions on that. Um, yeah, and at this point, I think we'll open it up for, for any other questions in general discussion, but you know, um with Monica here, Monica's seeking a direction on how to move this forward. Um, and if you were to move it forward to um a further research to inform any decisions is that uh we, if we, if we partnered with you, we would um carry out market research and analysis. Uh, we would then present back our findings to the board um with any recommendations and work with you to develop that compensation philosophy. So armed with that data, where is it that you want to be with your remuneration um as a local government organization? And I'll pause there and I'm, you know, we're, we're very happy to have further discussion. Um, any other um questions? We love talking about compensation. We really do. I'm a nerd.
I'm gonna go around the room. So Vivian, you're first.
Thank you. I have a few comments. I, I like it that we're, we're tied with the C P I for an annual increase. Um, just to make a point, that Director Rainbow and certainly the E A D have been bringing this up for well over five years. And I think um part of that was because it's difficult to find replacements, um at least for the electoral area directors here. And I've recently had the experience of a, a really bright, brilliant candidate who just told me plain and simple, I just can't afford to give up what I'm doing and do that. She'd like to do it, it's just not paying enough. I think our pay is fine, but I'm sitting with a pension, you know, and, and no debt, and I have some good benefits from my previous employment. But, you know, do we wanna keep, sort of keep these things for wealthy pensioners? I mean, I'd really like to see a whole bunch of young folks at the table. So um I, I certainly know that Tony was having difficulty finding a replacement and so am I. Um, we'll see what happens on the ground. I'm, I'm not sure we need to study it anymore as so much as we know the rate of pay compares nicely with some of the other regional districts. There's no doubt about that. I think we should add incidentals as uh something that we routinely pay for overnight stays. I think we should increase the meal rates. I don't think they're reasonable where they're sitting. I, I'd like to see some sort of mental health benefit added to the benefit package. I don't know that much about what the benefit package includes for, for staff. And I haven't taken advantage of it because I don't need to, but I know that's critically important for people considering taking these positions, younger folks especially. Um, and so I, I'm hoping that it's pretty good for staff. I think that it is from what I remember, from what we've seen before. But I don't believe there's anything in there for mental health. And I, I would really like to see that as uh something that elected officials could also take advantage of. Well, I can give a speech on that, but I will, I will refrain. Um, what was my other? The alter, the alternates. Um. Those meal or at least, I'm assuming the travel meal rates are the same for alternates? So, so the meal rates need to be increased for them as well.
Yes.
But, but there, the payment that they're getting for those meetings is that, I feel that's like a pittance. Because I feel that because they're not routinely doing this job, it really does take a lot more prep and briefing for them to participate meaningfully. And I, I think those rates we should, we should just increase. And uh we'll see what happens in the, in the next term. Um, in terms of, of uh recruiting to, to E A directors, but I do know that four out of four of us were, were certainly saying that we're not seeing other people coming forward to, I mean, the last one, we were four to four elected by affirmation, which tells you something, right?
Yeah.
Um. I'd like to see childcare added as well, as something that's routinely reimbursed for directors. You know, German shepherds out of it. And I'll finish there for now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So I suppose just as a, as a thought, I suppose what I'm interested in, I suppose for, for at least for us while we're here in the, on this call, is that what we'll be seeking is to make those, I think, informed decisions as to the recommendations that you brought forward, which I think is really interesting around how to improve. Do you feel that there's a need for more data to inform those discussions? Because what you're talking about is a little bit around the compensation philosophy. What do we want to invest in? How do we want to position ourselves? So I think the question for today is, do you have the information that you need to make those informed decisions? Or are you seeking supplementary data that we can, you know, that somebody we or others people can provide to be able to then inform those discussions? I think that is, uh again, correct me if I'm wrong, that is the question uh at this particular point.
Uh, okay. I will, did you want to respond to that, Vivian? Just because she's sort of responding to your comments?
No, I'm appreciative of the information that you've provided with, with, to us. Um, there's some factors that I don't think a consultant can help us with, like weighing out, you know, how much, I mean, I really agree with what Chair Ford said there. You could sort of put in as much or as little, but you can't deny that there's a whole heck of a lot of unexpected stuff that comes to you as an elected official that certainly I can't ignore. You know, the fellow that approaches me at the Remembrance Day ceremony to say, by the way, I can't find the link for your O C P thing tomorrow and I go back and look for it. No, it's not there. Hassle staff, figure it out, communicate back to him. You know, these things, the, that, that, that's not how I plan to spend the Remembrance Day afternoon. And, you know, that sort of stuff happens all the time, like you guys know.
So all of us, yeah, for different reasons.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that is a part, I believe, of public service. I, I'm, I'm not looking for, you know, to be compensated for that. I just feel that that's part of the job, but you know, certainly my partner says, well, this is a heck of a lot more than a full-time job. It isn't a part-time job. I, I definitely can say that. It's a very fair salary for a part-time job.
And it's, it is mu- a very much a calling.
Yep, there's some publicity.
Sounding kind of frou-frou, but it's, you're on all the time. Or, or you're, you're not. But you take a reputational risk. You take, you know, for people of all ages, of all careers, you take a career risk. Um.
That's true.
You know, like for some people stepping back from full-time work to do this job, you take a risk that um your career isn't there for you when you get back or when you choose not to run again. Um, you take, you take community risk, you know, of, of being isolated from your community in a lot of ways, you know, and we're hearing it in all different types of elected government that we no one wants to run for this job anymore, not just at regional districts, but at municipalities. It's, it's not. I, yeah, it's not without its challenges. Um, I'm gonna go to uh Armin and Mike and we'll just carry on unless you have anything else to add. No, no, Laurie, you're next. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. In the spirit of what data would I need to make a decision? Is this enough? One of the things that I've been reflecting on is the, I, I'd like to understand the meeting allowance structure that they have in other places, so we can really get an accurate picture of that, of that compensation, because that could be inconsequential. It could be actually quite, could really change that, the picture of that. So I, I would like to understand that more, so we know what tools are available and how when we develop a compensation philosophy recommendation. Do you think this is really a values, largely a values-based piece? Uh, however, understanding what tools we have available to us to express those values through, I would like to understand. So when I think about this, um, and the, there's a gap between the, we've had discussions in this room many about the differences in the roles between electoral areas and municipal appointees. And um and I, I think it, we would do uh future boards uh uh a, a service by defining that and like that gap that we have in the comp, in compensation, like is that meant to allow to compensate for additional travel time or additional meetings? Or like, how are we, how are we handling that? And I, I could see having, and that's where maybe the meeting allowance structure might be useful, so the same base, but there are more meetings, there's more, and it would net out to a similar gap. But like, how do we address that space and how of others? Because this isn't, this isn't just a, as much as we're all our unique snowflakes of regional districts, you know, this isn't just a, a, um, a, a problem for, or a challenge for, for us. This is a common thing. So how is that, how is that handled? And what assumptions are made in that, in that space? And I think that's a piece that's missing here as we talk about compensation, where like role definition and role, like that stuff is clearly plays into, into the, this as well. So um I do think that the travel and then also the different in that piece where electoral area directors are page A and Mr. Director's page B, it, can it be more granular? So like, do we need, like, in, in our area, it's a big load for someone in an area A, as we just heard, to come. Does that area A get a different compensation than area, like, do we want to do that? Is that a tool that others use? Is that appropriate? Is that not? Like, uh, there's some things like this I would like to know more about. And um, and I do think that we should be um uh compensating for, for, in a reasonable way for, in an equitable way for tra- for travel time. And um and that's not a, uh, it shouldn't cost money to, to do these roles, like, which is essentially what I could totally see happening there. And I, you know.
Maybe it's on his car.
You're, you're a director in the coastal central uh regional district.
You're flying or.
You're flying, paying overnight to go to a one-hour meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
So, but then it, but then it comes back to our electronic, you know, electronic participation part. Like, how do we manage this? And the difference between attending a, a meeting, you still have to do the same amount of prep and set aside the time of the meeting if you're participating electronically, but then there's not the travel time. How do we, like, there's a lot here that I think is, is missing, but the big piece is that for me is, we have the va- the values-based discussion around like how we attract and make sure people are running for these positions. I don't think it's entirely compensation, but compensation plays a role. But then what tools do we have for that? And, and and that's what I'd like to understand more sort of broadly, but those meeting, uh, yeah, meeting allowances versus including adding to compensation. Um, and, and that difference in um pay between the types of, of directors and that's appropriate, or whether that should actually be greater, given there's.
I didn't cut you off.
That's my summary of like.
Narrowed yourself. Hey, you're next.
Um. Yes, I, I think we have to acknowledge at the heart of it what you said, which is, you know, what you bring to it. It, it's such a hard thing to pin down. You go from, if you look at municipalities, at what point does our role become full-time and get compensated? I hold two part-time roles between this and the mayor, and I still don't get close to a full-time wage between those two part-time roles. So it's really hard to, you know, and, and therefore it falls on me to decide how much I can bring to the table. So I think that's a, gonna be at the heart of it no matter what. I think we want to keep it somewhat simple. I feel like we're close to having enough information, but we don't quite have an apples-to-apples situation in that the meeting fee structure, how it affects other R Ds, if we're gonna compare it to other R Ds. Does a total E A wage with meeting fees equal, you know, how does that compare? So I think we need a little bit more information on that. I feel like the travel, as stated, should be kept outside. I think we should keep it as simple as possible. Number of years ago, we went, hey, let's not, not have to sign in for every single meeting. It's a ton of work for our staff. We're wasting, we're wasting resources that way. So I want to keep it simple. I don't think we should have extra meeting fees. I think we should try to define the role, but I think travel should definitely be paid extra because that's such a variable for different directors. Um, Sal being the easy example, but every, you know, all these guys do a lot of travel in different ways. So I think that one should be kept out, but we should not, let's try to keep it simple after that. So I think we're close. I don't think we need a huge analysis. I would like to, I don't feel we're quite at the apple's top, so.
Okay. Laurie?
Uh, I, I agree. I, I, I don't know that we're quite there, but I feel like we're close and I feel like this group could, if we didn't go borders, that this group could figure that out. I do want to keep it simplified for staff. Um, but I also think that the alternates are, we really need to look at that because for my alternate, I mean, she takes two days off work. She's got to learn all this stuff. She's got to read it all. She's got to come prepared. It's a lot of time for a couple hundred dollars. And I think that the alternates are really the ones that need the rene- remuneration looked at to an increased and better reflect what they have to do. Whether they're online or travel, you know, that's, that's a bit different. But like I said, the alternates are where I think that this, this review um and what we're paying really falls short at this point.
I want to speak to that because I've floated this with some of you. It's something I've thought about. Um. So as a municipal director, um, take my chair hat out of this, but just as a municipal director, if I don't come to a meeting and we send an alternate from Whistler, they get paid the alternate fee, but I'm still getting my stipend. And so. And so should the regional district be covering both? Or should the regional, or should that come out of the municipal direct, like, so not to nickel and dime it. But if it becomes a thing. That the alternates are also, like, you're doubling down on what you're paying Whistler for that meeting fee. And so there's something for us to consider. Does that come out? And I don't think it would be the same for an area director, because. There's more, um. I don't know. There's a, there's a philosophy question. Is it, you know?
Can I reply?
Yeah.
So I have told my alternate, because she has to take two days off work, that I would, I would compensate her personally for that.
But that doesn't seem.
But but you know what? It's not worth it for her, like, she wouldn't, why would she want to do that? I would, I would help her out. Like, I, you know, because I still have to learn it, right? Because I still have to come back the next day or the next month and and know what happens.
Yeah.
So I've still gotta do that, but I'm gonna help her out because I don't believe that the. Two hundred or one hundred or whatever she's gonna get for for two meeting days is gonna, is fair compensation.
No. So then you just don't send anyone and then Lilowet doesn't have a vote at that decision.
Right, so.
Yeah.
You know.
Jenna, do you, do you want to speak to that? And then I'll come back to you, Mike.
Um, I think it's an interesting one. I think you like your personal decision there almost reflects. What Director Ford is suggesting, where it's like you could almost take the municipal director who is not present and take a portion of. Their stipend and allocate it to double down on the per D M. I know there are some regional districts who do that, but they're the ones who have per-meeting fees. And so I think, again, just like the simplicity factor. I just think you increase the alternate director's payment. Um.
To make it worthwhile.
To make it worthwhile and provide, and the other thing I'd suggest is provide them like a one-day of prep.
Yes.
Fees as well, so they, for a two-day meeting, they could charge a three-day amount. Um, cause then you're actually covering them for their prep time as well.
Mike and then Vivian.
Yeah, it's somewhat on on those lines and um, really, the alternate should be. Um, paid fairly, um, like Lori said, though, when, when I, which I really do, but when my alternate covers B. I still spend the same amount of time on the agenda, then I take the time to prep. Cause she's not, and and then I still have, so it's not like a direct in and out. Um, I would suggest that if we did want to. I think we would want to have a benchmark or 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 a a number where you miss X amount of meetings and your alternate covers. Then perhaps at that point, or X amount in a row or something, for whatever reasons, for all good reasons, but. Something like that. I I wouldn't want to see an in and out on every single. Does that make sense?
Totally, yeah. Vivian, then Jack.
Just an information point, and I see Mr. Francis here. I was just thinking that might be just a complete nightmare for finance. You know, taking, oh, okay, we gotta take a couple hundred out of Director Birch Jones's now, give it over here. Oh, that changes her total salary and the tax and like, how how much of a. And it gets that, or is that easy with all your magic?
It would be a manual.
Extra work.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, so, uh, I was chair before chair forward and we did a huge analysis of all of this and we got rid. Of a ton of the stuff that was redundant or it was was labor intense. And we loaded it into a very large increase to our remuneration. So we decided to get rid of meeting fees, to get rid of travel time, to to load it into a large increase to. Um, wages, which is what I think you see reflected where the S L R D is higher than. Um, acknowledging it's grown in other places through meeting fees and all that kind of thing, but I I would encourage us to be. Very, to resist as strong as we can, the pull to go back towards complexity. And so that simplification, I think, was a huge win and something that we should really do our best to hold on to. I feel like I have enough information here. I I like, I feel like we could go down a whole bunch more contracts with various. People doing good work to come back and ultimately have to make a values decision, which is. We don't feel like you're gonna be able to find. A a person to follow up. And so it seems to me that if we're going to make a values decision in the end. We should make a values decision now with the information that we have and rel- resist complexity. And take seriously travel times. To to me, that feels like a, a, a. Good outcome in the end. I completely agree with Director Richmond's point about. I help prep my, my alternate, like, uh, the, the, an alternate does not know what they're walking into. And if you don't spend time with them, they're not gonna be useful when they, when they come to a meeting.
I have a follow-up from Armand and then Chris, but then I'm gonna go to Russell for his, cause he hasn't had any chink.
Generally agreed with that. I just want to say that my interest in the, the, the. Uh, meeting fees and looking how that nets out is more defending the values-based decision that we're, that we'll need to make because. If we're sitting well above, like, we actually would be a good service to understand. How far above, or we're not, we're actually comparable, and this makes good sense, rather than we just sit above and assuming that. Those meeting fees bridge that, bridge that gap. I'd like to understand that more, but I, that's where my interest in it is. Um, and the, just on the matter of the alternates, I think there's a distinct difference too between covering and meeting for someone and. Yeah, or the role for a meeting and the longer term being an active alternate, which we're experiencing right now. Uh, in area, in area D for very, for understandable reasons, but like, that's not just the meeting.
No.
Right, like, it's, it's, we're talking about all the others, and I don't think there's any, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's. Nothing in there that represents that difference of like.
Yeah.
The alternate is assuming the role for a period of time. And how, what do we do with that? Is this something that happens elsewhere? Is this something that we need a one-off? Also for like.
I think we need an understanding of that.
Yeah, that I think would be useful, um.
I do see Catherine's hand, um, so I'd like to go to Catherine.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, I I didn't want to interrupt uh any conversation, but I wholeheartedly agree with, or we wholeheartedly agree with the idea that. Um, amalgamating meeting allowance into your basic stipend is absolutely best practice for administrative reasons and and uh. Other reasons, so um, our suggestion, our recommendation is, it would not be to add on meeting allowances. It's just to look at it as a total remuneration lens, um, and I, uh, yeah, thank you.
And maybe just to build on what Catherine is saying, so again, I think in terms of the, the, the decision that you'll need to make today. Is either you have all the information that you need, phenomenal. Alternatively, what I'm hearing is that there is a potential. To get additional information and recommendations regarding best practice is related to three things. One, additional information around that, you know, the meetings and how are those sort of. Uh, incorporation of the meeting allowances, is it keeping you still like, uh, leading the market or lagging the market? Making sure that the, the assumptions that were made are still relevant, uh, moving forward. So that was one sort of data point. The second data point is if you wanted was to make recommendations around updating your um, uh. Processes and and rules around sort of travel fees. And then the third that I'm hearing is, is reviewing and providing best practices and recommendations regarding sort of alternate remuneration. Um, you've identified a number of different issues around that alternate remuneration, and should you wish. You could collect additional data around how some of those best practices and considerations to bring forward. So I I suppose in conclusion. I'm hearing a potential request for additional information related to three different areas, um. That may be helpful, may not be helpful.
Chris?
And I wasn't looking to respond, I think.
Russell, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I I agree with Jack, but we went, we went through this ten or eleven years ago. Um, and um, tried to simplify the whole process. And uh, personally, I think we really don't need to change anything. Just leave it the way it is. The only thing that I would say, when we do this. I would rather see it done in the first year of a term than the last year of a term. Because to me, it looks like we're, we're gonna, say we did make adjustments um. To the remuneration, and this happens in municipalities all the time. They say, oh, we're gonna increase the uh. You know, municipal directors' pay on our way out, so it benefits the people coming in. Um, but the problem that I see is half the time, at least half the people that are coming in are the same people that just left. So they, they granted themselves a raise as they changed, you know, from one year to the next. And I think you wait till the first year of the term, have this discussion with the new people, and then. You know, if if you decide to move it on, do it in the first or second year and then let it follow.
That's precisely why we don't do it in the first, because you're not voting for your own raise, you're voting for.
Yeah, I understand, but you know what, it's uh. Uh, first or second year, whatever, but I think you can justify it more to the taxpayers. That way than this way. Anyways, that's just my opinion.
Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I hear you. Uh, my experience is that newly-elected. First year, the idea of setting their own wage is like, and it's still an awkward thing after many years, setting our own wage is still an awkward feeling for me. So first year newly elected, they shy right away from that.
Yeah.
To me, year three is the best. I would agree, keep it all packaged, but a question for you, don't you think travel should be included on?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, when, when we did this way back when, um. I think we, we consolidated. I mean, the way it was before, I mean, it was meeting fees on top of meeting fees. And it was timeline too, it, you spent more than two hours after the fat, you got this much and. Like, it was, you had to be Suzanne in order to figure out, not figure the thing out, you know? No, I think, uh, I I agree, we we missed that because, yeah, travel time is. Is part of your life sort of thing, um, so yeah, absolutely.
Um, just on the, the timing of this, I, I feel quite strongly it needs to happen um, in the last, in the last year. But early enough, not the last meeting.
No.
Like, early enough that it can, like, now, Q one maybe, sort of thing, so that. It can have the impact that we want it to have, which at at least some of that impact is driving people to.
Run.
To run and they know what it is. I do think that, um, it, there are, there were examples, I think it was. Well, I know where it'll be, I think it's Kelowna, I mean, it was Victoria. There were a couple municipalities that tried to do it in that timing. And it was a nightmare.
In the beginning of the.
And they stepped back from it, it just wasn't, it, it didn't, it wasn't successful. Um, for many reasons or and many, uh, however you score it, I guess. So I do think it's important, and I do think that setting this reoccurring thing is, is really important. But the other piece is that, like, the lens that um I've heard from Director Crompton and Director Mack around. Oh, this is what happened last time, and this is the philosophy. I'd love to see that captured somewhere. So when we do this work, we know that. If we're decided that this is a compensation rate, then that is inclusive of travel or not.
Yeah.
Or what that is, and, uh, yeah, and if if it's easier just to pay to, if we decide that we want to. Pay the electoral area A director, say, just more and to reflect that.
Yeah.
I I might be fine with that, but we need to articulate that, so we're not sort of layering assumptions on top of assumptions, so.
Well, so just. I hear you. Um, you may have an area A director that lives at the farthest. Point in the region. You could also have an area director that runs from Surrey. Anyone in British Columbia is eligible to.
And.
And.
Participate remotely every time as well, so it's hard to.
So, like, I never met Mickey McCree. He never was in this room in any of the time that I sat on the board with him, cause he phoned it in every time. Cause he didn't drive down, which was fine. But there, there's a difference in.
But he was in this room a while, he, you know.
That was just near the end. He, he came after him before that.
Yeah, no, and I'm calling him out, saying that someone can call in, not have any travel time. So to add that to the stipend for area A would be inappropriate if that person is only going to call in, and that is. Absolutely a valid choice that we have in front of us when we've added all of the technology to allow for people to. Remotely participate.
If I could clarify, my, my point was more that being explicit about it, whether we have or we haven't, or how we're doing that, not so much that we should do one or the other.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be said on this particular item?
Well, so just with the travel time.
Yeah.
So the travel time is if you travel.
Yes.
If you don't travel, no travel time.
Yeah, but the inclusive stipend includes travel time. Chris, I think you had something new.
Uh, well, just sort of my, where I am, so, uh, I really appreciate the report we have. For me, as a gut check, it shows me we're not way off in terms of compensation if comparisons to others is what's important. Uh, and so for me, I think it maybe is just philosophical things for us to discuss. Uh, I'm trying to pay attention to what problems are we trying to solve. I think what I've heard around this table in the past and today. Attraction retention, particularly attraction, particularly electoral areas is a, an issue, um. It may soon become an issue in the district squamish as we're growing so fast now. Maybe that's a, a, a challenge that most of the board would like us to have, I don't know, but, um, you know, that it may not. Solely be an electoral area issue. Um, you know, there's some special alternates and travel to deal with. I I do wonder, um, I I think defining the roles and responsibilities in my mind, I I played with the idea of. Is there a director rate, uh, and then a, an electoral area committee stipend? And that's for the differentiation, sort of underscores or aligns with, I think, some of our governance work possibly. Um, I I also wonder if there's a piece of, we're seeing this all through the eyes of compensation, but especially in electoral areas. I wonder if some of the obstacles we're facing would be better served by budget line items. Additional ones specific to electoral areas and specific staffing as opposed to electoral area directors, and so like, where do these? Pieces go? And so I wonder if, you know, there's some more governance work for us to do for parts of it, but. I I think in sort of big picture in terms of compensation, we don't seem to be that far off with, aside from a couple. Uh, things we can tweak amongst ourselves.
Yeah. Jenna, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I have a few high-level things.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. So just in general, I feel like compensation for locally government, local government elected roles is like a real challenge. And it's really tricky. I appreciate the work in terms of comparing to comparator communities where possible, but like the baseline is already. So off that it's like you're just kind of comparing to like the lowest possible denominator. Um, so I don't mind being up ahead, uh, in terms of some of the presentations that you, uh, showed with regards to other comparative regional districts. I also think there's so much differentiation between regional districts and how they actually do this, that. I feel like we actually have enough information here personally, because I feel like even going down the rabbit hole of trying to in, understand the details of various. Um, meeting rates is just gonna be really difficult to do because every, uh. Every regional district I've spoken to does it differently, um, and so I do think we end up in a values-based conversation that we can have anyways. Uh, I think one of the things that I am curious about that I saw in one of the responses to the survey. Was actually considering an inclusion of, um. Uh, average wage of the region. Um, so taking that into consideration, um, so this is what I call a part-time plus role. For us all, so like, if we take like the average wage of the region and we do fifty percent of that, like, where does that come? In terms of comparators, that's the one piece of information that I think I would be missing. Uh, things that I think, uh, would be really helpful. I agree to keeping it as simplified as possible. I'm not interested in adding. Additional meeting allowances, except for potentially a list of the external appointments for which. We would provide per diems if somebody is appointed to, so that you don't have to come back every time and seek. Approval from the board. I just think that's administratively would be helpful. Um, including travel time for directors, adjusting the alternates to include prep time, increasing the meal allowances. Uh, and I do think a review of the parental leave policy is also worthwhile in this conversation of kind of longer-term leaves. And whether we are comfortable covering the costs of both folks. Uh, the one who is on leave as well as the one who is attending as an alternate, and I think that's a worthwhile conversation.
Great, thank you. Oh, cool.
Um, I've mentioned the, the meeting compensation a couple of times, I just want to be, make sure that I'm clear with this. I'm not interested in what they're paying per meeting. They're paying per meeting or anything, just what it nets out to at the end. So like a Sophie, I don't know if it, I don't know if it's that easy to get to because.
It's not.
That's, that's, that was where my interest is, and if that's not something that we can easily arrive at. Then that's, I'm fine to let that go, cause I'm not interested in adding those, just looking at that discrepancy, I'm like, I know that gap is smaller. Then it looks there, I'd like to understand that better, but if it's uh, if that's a major project in turn itself, I can let that. That's where my interest lies.
I think I go to Sal. Sal.
Yeah, thank you, uh. You know, we do get remunerated for uh, for uh, transportation, so cost per kilometer. And we also get it for uh, gravel roads also, which is quite a bit more than. Standard just uh, paved roads. And uh. I think uh, uh, you know, there could be something tied to that with travel time. Um, so that, you know, the more kilometers you drive over X amount, then there's travel time. Added to it, so makes it a lot simpler. But we were also looking at currently, we've got a a project happening on a EAD staff person. So electoral area staff person. Which is kind of aimed at helping out the electoral area directors, so. And that's happening right now also, and I don't know when, any recommendations or or the report will come out, but uh. Um, I think we need to also pay attention to that as we move forward with this. But I I agree with keeping it simple. Um, last thing I want to do is start tracking my hours and uh. It'd be near, it it would near, it'd be near impossible to do, period. So thanks.
Thank you, Sal, and you know, the mileage is to account for the wear and tear on your vehicle, it's not your time. So the time travel is the piece that.
But I'm, but what I'm talking about is, you know, what's my average, average speed and and you can figure out the, how many hours it takes to. To do that trip.
Yeah. I'm gonna go to Catherine.
Yeah.
Catherine, go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to quickly, um. I just wanted to quickly respond to the gentleman that asked about the meeting allowances and the net, yes, we we do analyses. Uh, when we work with other like local governments, where we net it out, we don't. We don't, yeah, we we do the, what the meeting allowance is worth in your income or remuneration. I hope that answered that question.
Are you back? Do you want to say anything new?
Only that I, my own, but yeah, I, is this new, this isn't new, I feel like we have the information we need.
Yeah, no, that's appreciated, thank you. Um, I did have a couple of things, I've been keeping a list of the times that I've been told I can't be covered. For things that I've had to do on behalf of the board. And so I go to a community meeting in Brittany Beach. Because they've asked me to come, I'm not covered for my mileage or for my travel time or for going to that meeting. Now, is that included in the cot, the the stipend for the chair? Yeah, great, if I'm doing that three times a week. There, so there's pieces to this that I think need to be understood around, and that we've had this conversation, not not about me. But other individuals on this board going to community meetings that are not required. I'm going to meet with the gun club. Okay, because I'm going to their AGM to hear how they're spending the pelt money that we've given them.
Yeah.
Is that covered as a meeting? Do I need a resolution from the board to support me going to that gun club meeting? Okay, now I'm going to meet with the clown club. And now I'm going to meet with the uh, cigarette marketing club in Squamish. I'm picking egregious Squamish, I would never, okay. I'm also being invited as the chair to go to a chairs meeting of all the twenty seven. In uh, none of it. Is that covered, do I need a resolution to have that covered? Is my travel time, my flights, my loss of my full time work, et cetera, et cetera, is all of that covered? Um. The difference between being a municipal director as the chair and being an EAD as the chair. There are things that you're covered for that I'm not covered for as a municipal director. So um, those I've bumped up against with Heather a number of times, I've either had to eat it or come with a. Will you guys please cover me for the cost of going to this? That feels uncomfortable, it's complicated, it adds, and it al- it also privileges. Um, people who don't need to catch the chance. Right, so I think all of these things, and today is not the day for us to figure that out, but I think all of these things need to be. Uh, informed in this policy so that. Um. Role of the chair is compensated appropriately. Um. So back to my point about the meetings, if a director goes to a controversial AGM. And the rest of the board would say, we don't support you going to that meeting. We think that that would be outside of, you know, you're not there representing us, you're going on your own. And you're interested, um, how do we have that meeting fee? Conversation, because that becomes extremely controversial and political. And maybe people want to have that conversation, but I just feel like I I didn't want to get past this remuneration conversation. Without putting those rubs on the table for your consideration, um, before we pass a bylaw, bye.
Yeah, I think that uh. We as a group, we should be deciding. Um, on what meetings we go to. The CAO shouldn't be telling us what we can and can't.
Yeah.
Go to. If if somebody from our community invites us as representatives of. The regional district to come to their AGM, and and usually, like, say it's the fire department or whatever. We we put money into those organizations.
Yep.
So we should be going to their EGMs to make sure somebody didn't go to Hawaii on the dime, right? Um, and I I I think that, like, and you being the chair of this organization. You, you should absolutely, you should be making that decision, and I would, I would trust you to make that decision. Based on, yeah, this is beneficial to our whole group, I need to go to that meeting, or I should attend that meeting. We shouldn't have to be asking permission of the CAO if we can go to that meeting. That should be your decision, being the chair of this board, you're the one that's in charge of this organization, being the chair.
Yeah.
So I think something's out of, out of whack here.
Yeah, Jenna, you were.
Just clarify, I don't think you seek permission from the CAO, you seek permission from the board.
And the policy is, does not support the kinds of expenses because they haven't been contemplated as a policy.
Right, so there's the.
The policy, so she's holding the line.
So I appreciate the policy needs to be updated, I think there's an easy solution where we just provide an expense line item for the chair. And we can contemplate EA directors at a different level and directors if we need to, but that's like, could cover all your conference. Budget, and you have discretion within that envelope.
Yeah.
Um, and it just, we outlined some some guidance around that, but I think. As our, I appreciate our policy needs to be updated, but. My understanding is that we don't request permission from the CAO, we request permission from our board colleagues, if we're looking to do something that is outside of our current policy. It's not the CAO, the CAO is required to hold the line of policy, that's her job.
Yeah.
If you want to try and change the policy, bring it to this board.
And she has asked for us to do these kind of updates to the policy so that she doesn't have to say no. Uh, when I'm trying to expense my UVCM expenses, which wasn't covered, um, but. I will come back to you.
So I agree that when you're asked as our chair to go down to. Uh, Free Creek or to Lillet or whatever, I think your gas should be paid for. And I have had that issue myself when, um, and I think that. Area A, area B are pretty good with letting me jump on and and carpool with them, so I don't, I don't have those expenses. But I know that I've run into the issue when I've come to like the Gwen Bridge.
Yeah.
Um, uh, educational sessions and an area A, uh, I think. Uh, Sal was coming over, um, the Highland and Vivian wasn't coming, so I. I came, but I had to come to the board and ask for, you know, mileage and and I didn't like that at all, it was uncomfortable, I don't think that's right. I think that if if I'm being asked to do something, if you're, if anybody is being asked to do something like that, I think that the mileage. Without a doubt should be covered.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
And move us towards a resolution?
Sure.
Um, cause I see a few themes that have been identified here and then I and I don't wanna, I think we want to solve them necessarily. And there's a couple of direct questions that have been asked, so to to take this to the next step. Having heard the conversation, I tend to agree, I think we have enough information, I'd like to get a little bit more of that net. You know, what what is a, what does a director make all said and done in other regions, but I think we have close to to what we need for that, so. I don't think we need a not, a much greater analysis on the compensate, on the final number. For this board to discuss remuneration, um, I think we need, we can have that, as we're calling it, values based conversation. On its own, and let's pair out and ask our staff to come back with some suggestions around travel time for. All directors, um, as well as a training and travel sort of budget. Uh, that Director Stoner suggested having that that, you know, we have a training. Budget at the village that I could draw on, if I need to, you can call training or travel or whatever and and, you know, I still sort of. Talking through with my council, but, cause it's a limited budget, but the point is there is that lump sum that's there, that should be able to sort of clear up some of this. Some of these extra expenses, so I would like to see us move ahead with. With um, the information we have with regards to final compensation and have staff come back with some. Uh, thoughts around travel time, around extra meeting expense accounts that. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. I saw Sheila had her hand.
I I I put, I was just gonna do the same sort of thing to try to move it forward, so I I will hold off.
Anyone with any comments, been moved in seconded that we move ahead with the information we have to evaluate the values based discussion. Go ahead, Jack.
Um, I'm supportive of this direction, I think uh, when staff do bring back this work. I I think it'd be good to bring back our meeting stipend. Uh, amount that we had before the changes, that should just be a look back into what our previous policy was, I think that gives us enough. Understanding of what that amount was, and then, um. Yeah, it seems like it's a very straightforward, to me anyway, um. Acknowledgement of travel time, and we should include that in in remuneration, and I like the idea of a budget that. That you can draw from to do your work, wherever you go. I think your chair's salary covers your work there. Uh, and I certainly think of that, as far as my work as mayor is that I, I'm compensated. On an amount and I don't get additional money if I'm away or whatever, so it's it's really just a travel time. In mind, which I think should be very straightforward.
Yeah. Hi.
Sorry, I I don't know if I was clear, part of my motion was also that um, uh, altern- alternates, uh. Stipend or.
Meeting fees.
Meeting fees get reviewed.
Yes.
Could I add to that with not just the stipend amount, but short term?
The short term.
The short term that they're in, uh, yeah.
So the extenuating circumstances clause of.
Yeah, additionally.
Yes.
Yes.
And prep time.
Well, that's the, that's.
That's the. But I mean, the short term for special circles.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, in general, I I think I can support the direction, I'm just a a little bit worried that. We're asking staff to bring back stuff, so us having given enough direction, what specifically we're trying to achieve with these, like, we know we want to look at these things, but. Like. What specific outcomes are we looking to achieve? I don't know, it feels a bit vague to me, and and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe that's a question for staff.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, um, I think staff would be looking for a little bit more direction with respect to like setting. Setting the specific levels of remuneration and. Whether or not bases for comparison wanted to be used, or. What are we, what are we bringing, we're bringing back some additional data and analysis to the, for the board's consideration. For some more specifics, um, like for example, like if we want to increase the alternate director meeting fees, like what what level are we looking at? You know?
Yeah. Cause I mean, there's, uh, yeah, two thirty two is the current rate. There are boards that pay five sixty five. And so, and they're not that much different in code, in sort of scope of responsibility, so. Not to say that you need to go and find those other meeting fees, but to say, is what, what we're expecting for that two thirty two? A fair rate, is that enough to entice? Well, to support an alternate director coming to a meeting here, Jack, did you want to clarify?
Uh, I I feel like we can articulate the things that we want, I think we have, maybe we just need to be clear, we want travel time. We'd like to understand, we'd like to have a understanding of 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 um. Alternate fee, like our uh, meeting fees, and we'd like to have, um. Some analysis of a budget for travel. Uh, like, I I I I really resist another report, like, I like, I really resist another report, so.
Chris?
But, uh, like, I guess my question would be, travel time at what rate, like, are we, what, see, was like, with travel time at fifty dollars an hour or? What what's gonna guide the travel time we're looking for, that's, I'm not quite understanding.
Jenna?
Don't we already have a travel time schedule that we use for alternates?
Yes.
By kilometer?
Yes, and it needs to be increased because it hasn't been reviewed for a while. But we also know what our staff increase was to meeting, uh, to meals. We we've, we've also heard that the meal rate is too low. And we would like to bring that up, I think if we can align a lot of those things to simplify them with the staff. Um, we also, I don't want to lose your comment, Director Bert Shones about benefits. Um, and mental health benefits, cause. And childcare and parental leave or extenuating circumstances leaves for directors, so I think all I. This has been videoed. Our staff can go back and watch the video and pull every single one of these comments out. Um, I don't think we want to necessarily compare more communities or more um, regional districts. Because I think we've got that data, I think we know where we came from in twenty fourteen. And we can easily pull the report that was presented to the board at that time where they simplified. I think we all know how inflation has impacted rates, and so I think we can all see. Where a living wage, if we wanted to go to a living wage of a regional director, which is not the same as being a living wage of a typical employee. Um, and so I I think there's lots to work with, I'm happy to. Uh, continue this conversation if there's any sort of outstanding questions from staff. Um, or we can. See it in the next iteration, uh, we can even refer this back to the governance committee. Uh, to sort of unpack a little bit more of the policy before it comes back to the board, Jenna?
Um, thank you, and I appreciate the effort to try and wrap this up, I do want to. I recognize that I heard from staff that they are looking for a little bit more clarity and.
So there's no rush, we have nothing else on our agenda, so.
One thing that I'd be curious to hear from the board, I I don't, I also don't think we needed another fulsome report, one piece of comparator information. That I think might be helpful for a future discussion is on alternate rates. Um, that's one that I think we don't have comparators for, uh, and would be helpful for me at least to inform that discussion. Um, and then I think to what Chair just said, uh, aligning. Meal allowances, travel time for directors to existing policy first, that exists for staff.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, and then the other one that we hasn't been picked up in this conversation, I don't think yet, but uh, has been, was included in some of the feedback was. Consideration of um, business vehicle insurance rates for. Those folks who are using their vehicles, um, for predominantly. for those folks who are using their vehicles um for predominantly work time. I think it's E A directors that end up in that space. Um so I'd like to include that in our list.
That's a really important point because would you be covered driving your personal vehicle? That I think that's a important considerations for us to understand what our insurance rates look like. But Vivian.
Thank you. And and actually, thanks so much, Director Stoner, because I was puzzling over that too when I was looking at this report. Um I think we can get rid of the reference to dry cleaning, but I don't want to forget uh childcare.
There is no dry cleaning fees. I I have Sheila on the screen, then I'm gonna go to Jack and then I'll go to Armand.
Yeah, no, just wanted to to um uh unfortunately, we we have to to exit at eleven. So uh if there was any other questions, we have two minutes while we're here, but um, yeah.
You'll be able to hear back from our staff anything that you miss in the ensuing conversation. Um Jack, that Armand, thank you for being here.
I have, I can stay for two minutes if there's any additional questions.
Are there any questions for the consultants before they have to depart? I see no questions for you, so let's say goodbye to you now.
Okay.
We will uh certainly be in touch. Thank you so much for your time, and this has been enlightening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So so I wrote, I just took notes while Director Stoner is speaking.
I'm trying to do it.
This report, staff travel and meal rates, existing meeting fees from existing meeting fees for alternates, alternate meeting fees from other R Ds, consideration of vehicle, commercial vehicle insurance, mental health and childcare. Those were the seven things I had. I wonder if mental health and child, well, at least mental health, isn't a insurance provision through our.
Our benefits.
Health benefits, so I'm not sure that that needs.
It may not be included in the benefits package that's available to the area directors through the regional district. We have it through Manulife at the R M O D L U, but I don't know what the benefits package club covers here, so we want to understand that. The one, number eight, that you missed is the extenuating circumstances for alternate directors to cover an extended period of time. Uh so that it's not just meeting fees.
Alternate director extended.
Leave coverage.
Alternative coverage.
Roundly leaves, eternity leave.
Three films for like. Long vacation, imagine that.
Well, it sounds like you're thinking about it, a long vacation.
Uh Arment, you were next category for chair.
I think we've arrived at a good spot.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, expense and expense bu- and and chair expense budget.
Right. Yes.
I can send this to.
Send it to me and we'll.
I'm gonna take back my.
Good mileage?
For.
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah. Yeah.
Sorry if I can't actually. Now, I think what the one thing that I didn't mention is that this, I wanted to wait to just chime in on the piece around, like, we need to get our policy right. I don't think that the C A O is never telling anyone what meetings they can or cannot attend.
No.
That's what is, it's what compensate, what you can be reimbursed for. And and I do think that articulating what we as a group are willing to pay for people to attend and what people are able to attend on their own accord is is important. So like some definitions of that would be, to me, would be would be helpful. I I know that there are things I'm attending as, uh you know, on behalf of council, there's things that I'm doing by myself as my municipal role. And some categories, one category I get compensated for, the other category, or not compensated for, but uh it may be potential expenses and reimbursed. The other category I don't, and it's really weird. So I think we would be well served to understand that, so we're not, you know, uh we're making that uh helping the the interaction between elected officials and our staff and try to implement what is our policy. We'd like to have some clarity there to not eliminate some pressure.
Sorry, one more, and I'm glad I remembered it.
Oh, you still talk.
It's, thank you. The discussion of pen pensions. Um a U B C M resolution submitted by the city of Burnaby to support elected officials' participation in the municipal pension plan endorsed by U B C M. There's definitely a consideration for people thinking about running four years out of perhaps whatever plan they're participating in through their employment. And can they have an opportunity to participate in the pension plan?
U B C M is doing that work. We started that when I was the president, so um it'll be a process, but um it's certainly work being done by the municipal pension plan of V C uh to see how they can include. But then there are, you know, implications to that that need to be understood as well, so.
So we're not doing a.
We're not gonna do it.
R D pension?
No.
You are.
Like Metro Van tried to do. Boy, um.
Okay.
Sir, one more.
You're never one more.
Oh, it is one more. The the.
And do it quickly.
Sorry, the, one of the things I think was missing is that whether as a group uh we would like to bake this into a reoccurring thing every or every four year, every four years.
That's up to a new board. Like, we can't federate true.
We don't budget that far in advance, like for elections, there'd be a budget for that. Like, is this just part of that or is that, because we heard it was best practice, so how do we sort of set that up? I know we can't feder, but we can also like set things in motion that they can change direction.
I think that comes back with the staff.
That's just gonna be part of it. It just wasn't one of the.
So one of the re- recommendations, um should staff bring back the bylaw in the near future? Um. The bylaw will now have um procedures to conduct a review um each term. Cause that's not in the bylaw right now.
Okay.
So if staff were to bring back the bylaw, would the board like to see that in um an amended or a new bylaw?
I think it comes and then we can amend it to remove it if the discussion leads there. Is that fair? Go ahead.
Uh can I just see, Claudia, are we directing staff to draft a bylaw or to come back with discussion points on these items to each committee, the whole, to the policy committee? What's our expected direction here?
As the mover, Mike, what?
Uh I wouldn't think we were coming back to the bylaw. I thought we'd come back for that one next conversation, if that's not too come in.
That that was my understanding too. I think that gives us a better chance to properly craft the bylaw. Uh one other thing that has come up from another regional district is um there are there are individuals who feel going to U B C M or going to F C M or going to L M L G A or any of those conferences uh is critical to the work that we do. And then there are reasons that you can't go. Um but then I've heard from one member of council that they don't want to go this coming year because they don't want it to show up on their Sophie. And so uh because politically, you know, my Sophie is higher than your Sophie and therefore, you know, am I gonna get reelected? Because I spend more. Um it's it's an uncomfortable discussion, but I think just understanding what parts of these go to. This is the job and this is an option or this is my own professional development or. Um and so I think just being clear as this hits the newspaper when we vote on a new bylaw to say this is how we came to these decisions um about attending U B C M, about, you know, doing professional development. So um you know, the the E A directors forum in January and um all of these different things, I think they all need to be understood as expectations of the job. Because that's where we started this conversation four years ago was we can't get anyone to run in the area directors roles. We don't want to be acclaimed again and and have to do this job until we die. Um. Um but there's also, you know, what does the job entail? What are the benefits to doing this job as far as professional development, giving back to your community? And so I think this is the story. This is how we create the narrative around why to run. So I just wanted to put that up there first. Yeah. Okay, everyone good?
Hmm.
Have we beat this to a?
All this.
Awesome. I recall the question, are you good with the motion? Great, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Monica.
Good luck.
But we were the clowns on that.
And I totally hear you on the Squamour Cigarette Society.
Yeah, that's.
Powerful lobby, the powerful lobby.
You should all let you know. Beautiful.
Okay, that was fun. Um. Do we need a five-minute recess? I know we're, I know, Mike, you want to say like, let's hit the brakes, but I just, we do have another discussion to have.
Yes, we're cool.
Let's go back into post.
Hello.
Anyone, five minutes.
Can we wrap up the meeting and then?
Yeah.
Take five minutes.
Ew. I'm lost without my paper report and uh I'm not that uh chair verbal update. Uh I would pass today. Any late business for committee, the whole, being none. Matt, don't be moved adjournment, notify ground professionals.